Because you go the other way, you're in New Jersey or south, you're in New Jersey, right?
Yeah, that's where my mom and my sisters all live now, yeah. I had trouble downloading the the whole packet. I don't know, something's wrong with my computer. It said the virus, it said something, it wouldn't let me download it because of a virus issue.
Oh, okay. Well, and I did talk to Steve had a problem too, is that it was a really large file this time because a lot of the PDF, a lot of the pages in there are images as opposed to PDF text documents. So it was, it was pretty big, so.
I have it on my phone. I can open it on my phone really easily to read the, you know, the information, but I gotta figure out what's wrong with my computer.
I don't think it's your computer, so.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Steve.
Hello.
Hey, Steve.
Hey, Joe, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
Gentlemen, we're live on YouTube and we're recording. Gentlemen, we're live on YouTube and we're recording.
I'll just let you know four minutes later.
You repeating yourself, John?
YouTube, back talking back to us. Not me. Not me.
Where do you want me?
Those are all, all those chairs between, you can pick them down.
This one right here?
Yep.
Okie dokie.
Thank you.
Hello. It's from here that watch got set up and an email sent off, so we'll be good to go if something doesn't happen.
Appreciate it.
I never, I can't, those pictures are so small, I don't even know.
No, that's true.
Anybody hear the mouse?
Anybody what?
There's like a squeaking noise I've been hearing.
Oh.
Sounds like a mouse.
I'm sorry, I thought I muted myself. That would be, that would be squeaky balls.
Well, I'm actually looking at the cat on the other side of my computer, so hopefully it will stay quiet.
We doing, John?
Ready to go.
Okay, we got two minutes count. Next meeting is January 4th.
Can you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Z, where you been? Florida, white shirt, jacket?
For the last.
Kind of long.
Left more before eight thirty, it's two nine seconds.
It traded one hour and she didn't know that.
Oh, okay. I forgot, I wasn't hearing much.
That's right. Ties, I'm gonna impress Tony, right?
Yeah. I, you know, I forgot how to tie a tie. I think I got one left after retiring.
One of those boat guys probably gets so much now.
I got rid of a lot.
Okay, he's already done.
Yeah, I forgot my pen. I thought I was audited, sorry.
Okay. What was that young man's name?
Knutson.
That's it.
Wasn't it?
That's it, you got it?
And I needed a pen and he needed paper so we could take notes for it.
Forty-five minutes into the meeting.
Yeah.
Page seventy-two of the draft.
Oh, yeah, maybe I better take some notes here, guys.
Okay, it is Monday, December twenty-first, seven thirty P M. We are calling the meeting for the Village Board of Trustees, the Village of Sleepy Hollow. According to the pandemic executive orders of the Governor of the State of Illinois, we are allowed to have this via Zoom remotely. There is at least one member of the board present here at the Village Hall, that is myself, Village President, along with the Village Clerk. We also have with us this evening two trustees, Trustee Zemba and Trustee Merkel, along with our interim chief, Chris Klepeck, joining us this evening, and our A T guy behind the screen. Can everyone hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, affirmative.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna take that off because I cannot breathe and talk and keep moving at the same time. Okay, everybody can hear us. We've got Anthony Perino, Ed Harney, Steve DiAtly, and Joe Nimmick joining us remotely. Everybody can hear us. We are here together. If the clerk would call roll. Okay. Call the order, the pledge of allegiance. Okay, now a roll call please. Mr. DiAtly.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
Mr. Merkel.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Zemba.
Here.
All here. We have everyone in attendance. We have a quorum. We've got a meeting. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of eight, or of December seventh, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion so approved?
So moved.
DiAtly so moved.
Harney second. Would you like to second? Zemba moved.
Yes, second.
Okay. Moved by Zemba, seconded by DiAtly. There any corrections to the minutes? The one I'll note is that the consolidated day of general election is April sixth, not April twenty-first. Twenty-first, okay. That's the only thing I know. Other than that, roll call please. Mr. Zemba.
Abstained.
Mr. DiAtly.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Abstained.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Four affirmative votes, two abstentions, the motion so passes, the minutes are approved. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the President's Report. Real quick, before I go into the President's Report, I did get a notice this afternoon that there will be two free COVID nineteen test sites sponsored by the Illinois Department of Health within our region within the next few days. The first one will be Tuesday, December twenty-second, at the Elgin Sports Complex in Elgin from eight A M till four P M. The Elgin Sports Complex is located at seven oh nine Sports Way in Elgin. Then on the twenty-seventh of December, the Dundee Crown High School will be hosting the Illinois Department of Health testing site at fifteen hundred Kings Road in Carpenter'sville. And once again, those hours are eight to four also. So it's December twenty-second in Elgin and December twenty-seventh in Dundee Crown. Okay.
Steve, are those like drive up, do you know, do they?
Those are drive-through, yes, I know. And they are free, they are sponsored by the state, so.
Thank you.
Okay, President's Report. The Coronavirus Relief Fund. Been working with Mr. Florence and getting the video equipment ordered and set up. We've got to the end of this year, December thirty-first to get that done, so we're moving rather quickly here. We've ordered the laptops and Mr. Florence is working with the people on setting up the video in the meeting room itself. We hope to have all the equipment ordered, if nothing else ordered and back ordered before the end of the year. So that is where we stand now. The next item I've got on there is the referendum for a proposed tax rate increase. I threw this up in the air last meeting to see what the response would be. One of the comments was, I'd like to have the conversation with all trustees present. Well, we've got all trustees present this evening. One of the things I did find is on the timeline, if we submit a referendum to be placed on the ballot, the board has to pass that referendum no later than Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. So that gives us this meeting, the first meeting of January, and then the third meeting in January to have an ordinance if that's what the board so desires. That's the timeline. What does that? You, the discussion of this, we can take it up now, we can take it up later when we get into the proposed tax levy. Which, what would you like, gentlemen?
A quick question, Steve.
That's your head.
That January nineteenth deadline, is that a deadline for the actual wording? Or just that we are going to put it on the referendum?
No, that would be the deadline for the ordinance, which would include rewording. Which has, and remember, this is not an advisory, this is a binding referendum. So language has to be set according to state statute.
By that date.
By that date.
Okay.
And that's our meeting date, so it's okay to pass that that night?
The, from what we understand, the state statute said it must be passed no later than January nineteenth. That is our meeting date, so it would work with us on that. So. But if you want to hold off any further discussions on it, we can do that when we get down to the, the tax levy under Don's report and finance.
I just had, I just had a, sorry, Mr. President, I just had a quick question. It with, is it binding because it's finance related?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's not advisory. We are asking the people for the permission to raise the, the property tax rate to a specific level.
Will you come in?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Clerk's Report.
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Planning and zoning, we have a report from them this evening. Attorneys report. We have nothing from the attorney this evening. Engineer, you'll find a quick update from the engineer in your packet. We have received words that the letting or the bid processing for Sibley Hall Road will be done in June of two thousand twenty-one. June eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, to be exact. Okay, that's it for the engineers. Finance. We have a motion to approve the warrants in December twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrants of December twenty-first, two thousand twenty in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Harney second.
Motion by Zemba, seconded by Merkel to approve the warrants of one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? Revenant, roll call please. Mr. Zemba.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. DiAtly.
Aye.
Motion passed. Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, motion so passes. Okay. We have an eight o'clock for Mr. Mills. Miles.
Oh, yeah, that's me.
Miles, I'm sorry. If I put my glasses on, I can read that. Sure thing.
So I'm the treasurer of the Bluffs Sleepy Hollow, this is the president of the Bluffs Sleepy Hollow, representing the Bluffs and this question that we have to kind of get answered. We have, we are responsible for the property in front of the Caskey River Ridge. You know that there's a fence that was there, anybody agrees that the fence was there? And may not agree that there's a fence that was there in front of the Caskey Road.
I heard there was a fence there.
You're talking about the split rail fence?
Would you like to see a picture of the plan of the fence? In the, the plan I have right here. Those, these real fence. Right here. Across the pond, pond area of the Caskey Road and River Ridge, which is there to help keep people from falling down a seven-foot wall down on the other side. And the fence has been there since the I will begin thirty years ago. So if anybody wants to disagree, the fence was there, they can, but the fence has been there. The problem with fence was that material, the fence has been gained over twenty-five years. And we as community have been paying hundreds of dollars a year trying to defend fence standing by replacing wood, wood rails and uprights and putting stones in and whatever it is, it is. And we finally decided as a community that this fence has to be replaced. So we had a community meeting, we agreed to replace that fence, we had a special assessment for the community, replace the fence, make the payment for ourselves. And we applied for a permit, it was the Sleepy Hollow, which we received. We were told that there would be some payments that be made to get the fence replaced. And we went ahead and replaced. I don't know if you've seen it, it looks terrific. The front of that community to our community, not just the Bluffs, but to the Sleepy Hollow. Looks really good, I think. We take care of that area very well. I received the bill from I C C I, who was your subcontractor, for one thousand ninety-eight dollars to get that fence put in. And when I looked at the bill, it was all kinds of research regarding the, the cost of her research, the, the cost of putting a, add the paper, the cost of rezoning, and all that, and I'm saying to myself, why am I paying for the sins of the father? If this was not supposed to have been there, why didn't the city Sleepy Hollow take it out? And why am I paying to your paperwork right? Because alls I wanted to do was replace and update and upgrade what was already existing in the property. And that's my concern is, why am I paying one thousand ninety-eight dollars to fix what already existed in the property? I paid a hundred dollars for building permit, I put in the permit, I got approval from the permit from the board, and I, and I get a bill for one thousand, we're only small meters, only fifty-two of us, why are we paying this kind of a bill?
So wherever a variance comes to the board, there's a fee involved with it. We have to publish the notice, we have to have a public meeting, we have to have a court reporter, we have to have a finding of facts drawn up, and then the board passes the variance. These were expenses that you had shared with two other parties in that particular instance.
Excuse me, just a minute. Who, who else has got a party towards this fence?
There were three, there were three variances brought to the board at one time.
I don't know about three, all I know.
That evening.
Not yours, there was another one prior with the swimming pool, and there was another one with a, I believe it was a porch. There's a third one. A porch.
Okay.
Okay. All those variances, a variance is gonna cost us, as I said, we've got fixed expenses. We have to meet as a village.
All right.
Okay, publication. You're asking for the variance, not the village, therefore we ask the applicant to pay those expenses.
So if that fence was not supposed to be there, why didn't the village have it taken out and removed at the time that it was put up?
We don't go around making, conforming property that is not property of the village. That is property of the homeowners association, not the Village of Sleepy Hollow. I'm not gonna send my crew on your private property to take a fence out.
Then why am I paying to get your paperwork right because you guys can have it prepared correctly at the time the fence is planted? Why am I paying to have variances, ads put in the newspaper?
Because we do not allow fences within the village and residential district. We never have.
Okay.
Okay. I was not on this board when the Bluffs Association came before the Village of Sleepy Hollow and hammered out their agreement. All we can do is go forward with what we inherit.
That's all I can do too. Yet I'm getting paid, getting charged one thousand ninety-eight dollars for something I had. Alls I wanted to do was upgrade and beautify our community. That's all I wanted to do. No one told me, she never told me it was gonna cost me a thousand dollars for her to research, put ads in the paper to make variance changes, to write all kinds of stuff. All she said was, here's what you need to do, you put your, put your paperwork in, if you wanna get a fence up, I put the paperwork in. And I picked up a bill for a thousand dollars. No one, no one told me that. You don't get a free right of whatever it takes. I mean, if someone brought your, if you brought your car in, someone said, oh, I gotta fix it, come back next week, that's twelve thousand dollars. No one told me it was gonna be that.
I understand. I've had a conversation with the I C C I about the process. And that situation has been corrected going forward. In the future, anybody applying for a variance will be required to place an escrow account check with the village in the amount of about fifteen hundred dollars. That seems to be what it runs to do of variance in the village. So in the future, that will be.
So I'm the experimental whipping boy here at this point. I'm the experimental whipping boy at this point.
No, sir, you just brought it to our attention that.
That you guys made a mistake.
Maybe we should be a little bit more businesslike and set the process down in a little bit rigid format. We've been a little easygoing, we're a small community. We stop by, hey, you need a variance, yeah, we'll fill out the paperwork and go with it. It's gonna cost you a couple bucks.
I'm a smaller community.
I know.
See, the problem is, we came out with the notice, sent the notice out to everyone earlier in the year to, okay, we're gonna have it up, you know, everyone's gonna have to pitch in extra for the fence, and everyone just kind of ticked off because of the COVID thing going on, some people aren't, you know, wanting their full income, and they go, okay, fine, we'll do the fence. And then now we gotta come back second time and say, hey, guess what? We got this. How much was the actual fence?
Ten, ten, ten thousand dollars plus three, I'm probably around twelve thousand by ten hundred.
President Pickett.
Besides, it's a nice improvement, but it is, it's like ten percent of the fence. The cost is a variance, it seems, it just seems high.
You know, I wasn't privy to your communications, but Barb Detner, Detner? I see. She wrote us a note, said Mr. Miles was advised there would be costs for the attorney publications, and it says two hundred dollar fees, two hundred, publication fees, and it says two hundred dollars. It says three hundred dollars, court reporter, and me. But I didn't know the amount, so she, she is saying that she advised you that there would be these.
I'd like to see that because I was never advised of anything.
I, I'm just telling you what is written there. I, I, like I said, I don't know personally.
I'll write a note that said Barbara Detner told me that was no cost. I don't have any.
President Pickett.
Anything, but.
Yeah, this is just in our package here.
You know, besides her price, I also had to pay a hundred dollars for a, a, a permit plus put up the, the fence, and I don't understand why we're working hard to beautify our community, and yet this Sleepy Hollow board doesn't really care what we do, it just costs money. We've had trees fall down. We've had, you guys, would you please help us with the tree? Like, no, that's your property, you deal with it. We've had a, a, a legal battle with one of our residents, who said, would you help us with that? They said, no, that's your property, you deal with it. And here we are dealing with our property, and yet now it's gonna cost me a thousand dollars to deal with our property.
President Pickett, if I could mention something.
Hold on just a sec, let the gentleman finish his comment.
I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Perino?
In the homeowners association, chapter six, it, it talks about a couple things. At the end, it says, therefore, maintenance of the stormwater retention pond and the retaining walls shall be the responsibility of the association. That, that particular fence that the association decided to repair because of a safety issue that is unique to that association's neighborhood is the responsibility of the association. The fees and the charges that, that I C C I, who represents the village in building and zoning requirements, those have always been the responsibility of the person who is submitting for the variance. That, that has always been the case. In this example, there, that particular evening, the charges were divided by three so that the three different parties that came that evening all had a share of the court reporter and, and the, the newspaper notice and various things. I, I understand some of the frustration of the resident, but at the same time, that is a unique community that is part of Sleepy Hollow, but they have their own association and their own fees and their own financial backing. So that's just reading from what the agreement was back in nineteen ninety, when the agreement was assigned. That's all I had.
What would you like the board to do, sir?
I think. I think that the reasonable thing to do is to share the expense, because like I said, we did not put the fence up, we are just trying to maintain the fence and, and, and repair it. If you say that we have some financial responsibility, I agree that we should pay something, but I don't think that the one thousand ninety-eight dollars in our community is right.
Actually, do you think the village's share should be?
I think that if we split the bill between us fifty-fifty and take one hundred dollars off for the, for the building permit that I paid upfront, would be a fair and equitable accept.
Gentlemen? I have a quick question for you. The other two cases that were up at the same time, did most people have to pay attorney's fees? And they paid a third of the entire cost of that, of the attorney's fees, of the publication fees, of the court reporter fees, and their share of ICCIs? And it seems like if, you know, I understand your position, but if we reduce this, and we need to reduce it for everybody who's coming for any kind of variance?
I disagree with you.
Fine.
Correct. Absolutely correct, Mr. uh, Mr. Merkel.
Why, why do you disagree?
Because, like I said, I'm not going in trying to put a pool in, I'm trying to do something different. I'm trying to improve what's already there. The fence existed. Alls I wanted to do was improve the property by replacing a fence that was falling down and rotting and looking terrible to make our community, not my community, our community, look better and presentable.
Point of war, Mr. President, since the agenda item just says John Mills, president of Bluffs Homeowners Association, we might, I don't think we could take any action on this tonight that way, so I think we have to watch the discussion.
We haven't had any action to take at this point, we're just discussing, Joe.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but we can't take, take action, Reid.
Right.
Hi, Mr. President.
My question is, the finance guy, why wouldn't they have been told about the fees upfront? I don't want to, I don't care about the ordinance and stuff, it's like I'm coming in for something. Why wouldn't you tell me what the cost is? I walk away, I think I'm done, so I can understand their point.
I can too.
Who's like the day?
I've had a conversation with ICCI. I've seen going forward, any variation application comes within the village of Sleepy Hollow will be required to submit a fifteen hundred dollar escrow check with that.
Says in this little note that's in our package, it's a good advice.
But it's verbal. It's all been verbal.
You know, you-
She says she's advised, and she says she does recall being advised to any of the fees. So that's why I said, it needs to be in black and white, in writing, you know, going forward. That's, that's my takeaway from this.
It is, it is private property, correct?
This is the Bluffs.
Yeah, I mean, but that, that piece of property is private property that it's not, it's not- And, and the fence was replaced, not repaired, correct?
That is not on, that's not, that fence is on Bluffs property, correct?
Right, and it was, and it was replaced, not repaired, right?
Common ground, it's what we call common ground.
And-
I've got two comments.
Excuse me, Ed, go ahead.
Going along with Joe, this was not an improvement to the fence, the fence was taken down, so the we're starting from scratch here, they want to erect a new, a new fence, it's not a fence improvement. Now, a thousand dollars seems like a lot of money, but when I heard that, I think the, the, if he were to apply for this variance by himself, the fees would have been much higher. So to be able to share the fees is, was actually a benefit.
I don't understand what you mean about, we did not take down the fence, the fence was replaced. Part of our agreement with the, with the erection of the new fence was that they would remove, we all want to replace it with a new fence.
You had to take down the fence?
You hired him to do it.
Huh?
The, the homeowner, the association person hired the people to take down the fence.
Right.
I didn't understand what he was saying then, when he said they didn't take down the fence.
But a- again, my point comes back to the same thing. The fence existed on the property, alls we were doing was trying to replace a fence that was deteriorating uh, due to being there for thirty years, to rotting and falling apart, that we were paying hundreds of dollars for the last three years to keep it standing up, and it's fallen over. So all we did was took out a deteriorating fence that was a eyesore, and put it up with a fence that's guaranteed for life for this community, uh, with a new fence, which is uh, very aesthetically pleasing.
What does the homeowners association say?
That's the homeowners association, they represent the homeowners association.
And if you talk about all the homeowners, we had a board meeting, we agreed to have a special assessment to do this work, and we charged all the homeowners to have this board put in. And so by then, I would say that all homeowners agreed to the fact that we should replace that fence.
Now, my point was, what does the written homeowners agreement that Anthony?
So the one-
What does that say?
Yeah.
It's in your packet, Ed.
No, and that's what I'm just going back to.
Okay.
Yeah, Anthony read it.
Yeah, that one section. You know, I, I, just another comment, I, I, I had a new driveway put in, and, and my contractor, after I had my signed agreement, said I had to pay an additional six hundred and fifty dollars because things were unseen. I paid it. My driveway is aesthetically pleasing now to the village of Sleepy Hollow, and it's on private property. The fence at, the Bluffs is on private property. It's aesthetically pleasing to Sleepy Hollow, but they have to pay the entire fee, everything. It's, they, they came to the board to ask for the variance and for the permits. And you know what? There are charges associated. Sometimes they're not explained upfront, but just like in my case, I should have asked my contractor how much more I was going to have to pay. I didn't do that, but I had to pay the difference because the job was complete.
So let me respond to that. When I contracted for this fence to be put up with the, with the home depot, we agreed on a price, then they came back and said that price includes uh, putting in the post, but the dirt would be left in piles. I said, I don't want the dirt left in piles, it'll leave another five hundred dollars to do that. We went ahead and paid that. Uh, then they said, we said, we need to have some of the trees removed so the fence will be able to fit where it's supposed to go. And we agreed to pay that fee, and we paid that. And then they said they wanted to do something else, whatever it was, but we agreed to pay that. Now, because somebody came in to put a driveway on your property and charged you over, doesn't mean that you should have paid it, that's up to you. This is something that was not brought up to me and explained to me before we got the bill. And had this come up to me and explained to me before we got the bill, I would have to present this to my homeowners, say, by the way, to get this done, we have to go out and have a, have a change done about the survey, we have to have a change done about the, how the, what is it that they called, so that we could put, put a fence up, a variance to the standard. We had to pay to do all, she had to research this thing for a thousand dollars. You know, had, had it said that to me ahead of time. It's just that one day I woke up and got a bill for a thousand dollars. Now, some guy put a, put a driveway in for you and said, oh, by the way, there's another six hundred bucks. That's me doing you your contract.
Uh, let me, let me stop you, sir, I apologize for bringing up my personal driveway, but I can tell you that that property is your responsibility, and that's all I'm going to say. If, if and when the board decides to do something, then we, we can discuss it further.
I've got one last question. If, if you knew upfront this was going to cost you a thousand dollars, would that have killed the project?
Quite possibly could have, yes, because I had to bring this before my community and my homeowners to explain why we were charging them a special assessment. And had the homeowners decided they would not have allowed that for the special assessment, it could have killed the project, yes.
Well, always could have, but you really think it would have killed the project?
You know what, I'd like to see ICCI's bill. What is attorney's fees, what is their fee, what is court reporter, what is whatever?
Oh, no.
And I'd like to talk to Ms. Detner about it, is, because I'm I guess on this sheet of paper, someone, she wrote, apparently she wrote that she, yeah, advised Mr. Miles of.
She didn't advise me of any of that, this just all came in a single packet at the end of the program. The, the day the fence went up.
See, the fence is getting put up, as we're getting the bill. So on the other illustrations, you know, you but, you know, the one point I would say, no one can predict the future for all these things being built, so there are some costs that come in that are different, but I think that's why, you know, instead of coming in and saying, hey, we don't know any of it, or what's going, you know, to split it and say, hey, this seems like a fair way to do it, to split it between us and you guys. Um, and I think even moving forward, as Mr. Pickett said, there's going to be a fifteen hundred dollar charge whenever these things are being done to put in escrow, because you know this stuff happens. So I think that's kind of like proof in the pudding, saying, yeah, we kind of could have, should have, would have done it better, could have done it different. So let's kind of split the difference and move forward. I think that's an equitable, equitable thing to do in a non-perfect world.
I, I can tell you one thing, if, if it's decided that it's done for the Bluffs, then I will personally get the other two individuals that evening and have them do the same thing. So this is something that you cannot uh, just look at it as an individual situation because you guys were part of, of two other people that evening during that zoning board and during that board meeting.
Okay, gentlemen. We've got a situation here where Mr. Miles has asked us to consider reconsider the invoicing of their bill. They would like to see a reduction of fifty percent plus the building fee and permit itself be removed, i.e. you want down to four hundred dollars out of the thousand.
I lose that, now ready to check right now.
Uh, as has been pointed out, this was not an action item on the agenda. If that is what you would like the board to consider, we will put it on the agenda from the Fourth of January in those terms, and the board can consider it at that point and take a vote on it.
So would the board, would the board be willing to renegotiate or, or give me a counter proposal that time, or is it all or nothing?
Gentlemen, that's the proposal from the homeowners Bluff.
Can we get a consensus this time, Steve, is that legal?
We're just talking, this is something we want drafted up for adoption at the next meeting.
Can we, we get a consensus without voting on it at this meeting?
I'm not, I'm just saying, do you have a counter that you would like to be proposed? Yeah, I would take half, not the hundred, leave the hundred bucks on, and I would go half. It's just still, that's still having part of the bill, you can't get that for free.
If I could make a comment here, what I'm seeing here is, is a bill from ICCI, a, a bill from the reporter, court reporter, who took the minutes, and Daily Herald for Publications, what um, there is a, a note from Barb that she's emailing the variance ordinance to attorney, village attorney Schuster for review, so this amount that they're talking about, eleven hundred dollars or whatever, does not include what we also paid for Mr. Schuster apparently, if, if anything, which I'm, I'm sure there, it is something. So I don't know what we're on there as far as attorney's fees, but I could, I could say there easily could be up to five hundred dollars, I, I don't know. So I don't know if he was present at these, at these meetings, or if he, if he did a memo, we did, I, I'd like to look at our um, accounts payable, we paid attorney Schuster for this, because it's, it's more than eleven hundred dollars.
I can tell you, I can tell you guys, we're walking on thin ice. Because if this is, if this, uh, I think what happens is we would make a motion at the next meeting, and the motion would be uh, in so, so many words, and we vote yea or nay on the motion. But if this were to go through in, in, in this, in a, in a, in a positive way to assist this particular situation, then I will personally tell the other two people to come to the board and do the same thing. I think we are making a big mistake entertaining this thing. And, and if we're going to have a conversation, the conversation would be that uh, it is what it is. And, and, and the cost of living and doing business and the village of Sleepy Hollow, if the home, if the homeowner, if the resident doesn't realize, we are in a financial trouble ourselves, who's bailing us out? I'm done.
So my, my closing, I would accept your offer without a problem, I'll pay the hundred dollars for the uh-
There's no offer out there yet.
The, the, the Bluffs have asked us to consider a sixty-forty split. Zimba has said he would consider a fifty-fifty, the Bluffs have just said that they would consider a fifty-fifty split.
And I would consider a zero split.
You go zero, Mr. Merkel wants to look further into it.
I'm kind of with Anthony on this one.
What's that, Joe?
I'm kind of with Anthony on this one, I feel it, it's private property and it's, it-
I agree with Anthony, if we do this for one, it's going to come back and bite us on every one of them, guys.
I made my position clear, I believe in what Anthony brought up in their homeowners association. Agreement.
If that's the case, then why are you changing the rules moving forward, knowing that there might have been done a better way? And that having an escrow of fifteen hundred dollars is really the right way to do it.
That was a suggestion presented to the board.
Okay.
So I guess we're going to ask the board to please consider our position. I understand what you said, we understand there's not going to be a decision tonight. Uh, have your um, uh, meetings in consideration, you know where we stand. And um, I'm hoping that you find a way to help us out. On the other hand, I think that uh, the best looking entrance to our community is the one of the Bluffs of Sleepy Hollow.
There you go.
They're going for us.
Yes.
I'm sure if we were to make a-
Sure, thank you, gentlemen, sure.
Have good rest, everybody, thank you very much.
Stay warm.
Little bears.
We can save it.
Okay, uh, moving on, we've got public comments. The only one we've got in this evening, uh, it is asked to be read at tonight's board meeting. I go, hello, board, I hope you're doing, you are well during this holiday season. On December thirteenth, I made a post on the Nextdoor Neighbor app to see who would like sheds in Sleepy Hollow. A hundred forty-four people voted with sixty-five percent in favor of sheds. I posted this on Nextdoor thinking I can't be the only one who would benefit from having a shed. I know this has been an ongoing topic in the village, and I wanted to bring this post to your attention. With this information, it would be nice to see a referendum backed by the village. If the village is unwilling to back a referendum, I wanted clear instructions on how to proceed. I am willing to do the footwork to get the necessary signatures and whatever else is necessary. I've attached a copy of the post for the village president, the board to review. Comments on both sides of the topic can be useful moving forward. Thank you and advice in advance, Michael Michelli. And then he included pages of copies of quotes from people on Nextdoor Neighbor app. Okay. That's it for public comments this evening. Uh, trustees reports, roads and parks, Ed?
Um, I was to meet with Wendy last week uh, to discuss two proposals that have been submitted for the printing and mailing of the vehicle sticker, the application form uh, for twenty twenty-one. Uh, as the board is fully aware, it's not possible for us to presently meet at this time, so I would recommend delaying this board discussion. If the board feels that we do need to move forward, Wendy did provide some written suggestions, which I could read uh, if, if we want to move forward or need to move forward at this time.
Uh, let's see, what have we got, vehicle sticker rate review? Those are going to have to be a decision that's going to have to be made pretty soon in order to get the- Those are going to have to be a decision. It's going to have to be made pretty soon in order to get the uh information printed and out. So are you asking to draft to put this on the agenda for January 4th?
Um.
Okay, let's review a minute. The vehicle sticker rates. Have they been approved?
They haven't been changed.
Right.
They they just. They don't need to be once they're they don't need to be approved every year. Once they're they're set, they're in the village code. So they're there unless we change them. And so. And we changed them last year.
We're in the process of putting them in the code, right? Isn't that where that stands?
No, I think they're still in the code from the last time we approved them. We just we just uh updated the. Price, the 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 table of fees is what Mark calls it, which is just associated with that. So those were not changed. So I don't think we changed any fees last time. So and then. Last year about this time, we raised the vehicle sticker fees because we hadn't done that a while. So they just changed last year.
Yeah, they were raised $5, I think, across the board last year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So. I I will point out that it looks like they never got updated in the village code. So I don't know if we if we the ordinance never. Got passed on to the codifiers or where that sits because the old fees are still in the village code, but we did pass an ordinance last year to raise them.
It's it's been submitted and we have received the uh the new uh. Uh, code sections, however, because we've gone to a new co- codifier. We're still working with them as to the process of uh updating the manuals, both online and in paper.
Okay.
So since since Steve said we increased my $5 last year to increase them by like 5%, we we end up with on round numbers and with the pandemic and just increasing them. I I have no problem with. Keeping them same for a couple of years. I think Steve, that we've done the past, we like increase them like every three years or so. By even numbers.
Yeah, we try and review them on an annual basis, but we don't raise them every year. Sometimes we go three, five years between them. So if we're happy with the rates where they are. No changes.
I'd be happy with them if they're.
I I'd be happy with their if we raise.
I'm happy with. Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, so that takes care of the rates. Now the application form. For printing. That that's what was. The two proposals were.
Right.
And I I know I know uh Joe has some. Suggestions for improving that application. But how much time do we have? To agree on a final application form?
About. Four weeks.
I would suggest we kick that part of the conversation back to the next meeting.
Okay.
And do you have that revised form? Ed, can you send that to Tony for the next meeting or?
I'll take.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And I and I will say that Steve and I had a conversation with Wendy. Before she went out on sick leave. Because when we had our initial meetings with the TMA. They had offered to mail out. Have basically four databases, water sewer customers, water customers, sewer. Um, customers and not none of the above. And this is one of the things that was brought up about mailing out the form, but I think. The fact that that is not set up yet and Wendy is still working on verifying that. And since she is gone. I would be comfortable with just using. The same people we used last year because. As Steve said, time is of the essence. So and then work on possibly using a different. Or bidding out the printing services next year. Steve, you any comments on that, Steve, that? I mean.
Give you time to work on something rather than try and get it done in two or three weeks.
Right, we don't know what.
Holidays would be real difficult.
Right.
Yeah, and by the way, that was Wendy's recommendation. Um, she says to remain with Allegra. She said due to the cost, but then give consideration to TMA. A more automated system. For years thereafter. But with the present. Financial situation, I was going to say I agree with Wendy and let's. Let's just go with what we've been doing for another year and keep the costs down.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Overall consensus is we'll stay where we are with the the new form after we get it revised though. With Allegra.
That's fine.
That's fine.
We're going to update the form though, right? Looking at the next meeting?
As I said, we'll.
Okay.
We will update it this year. So, okay.
Yeah, kind of hard to hear you sometimes, Steve, so sorry, apologize.
No problem. My mic is hiding behind my tablet.
And that's all I had, and I'll get that form submitted.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ed. Uh, finance, Don.
Yeah, I have one question on this uh before I make a motion. Is the amount we were going to let we wanted to levy 845 or 843?
We, I believe, said 845 in our message.
Well, I mean, we can go lower.
We can go lower, right.
The two sheets don't tie. That's why I'm scared. Okay.
I think that's.
I just want to confirm. Well, then I move that we approve the 2020 tax levy. In the amount of 845,000.
Arnie second.
And it is 2020 because that's what they pay next year.
Right.
So I just want to make.
Right. Okay, tax levy ordinance number 2020 dash 20. Has been moved and seconded. This is the tax levy for the year 20, which will be collected in the year 21. Any comments, questions or discussion?
So I just want to ask a question about just the definition explanation. Uh, I know I I know I pay property taxes here and so forth. But when we say a proposed tax levy. Are are is that defined as the 845,000 is the total amount of dollars that we would be collecting?
That is the amount that we estimate at the moment that we would be collecting at that rate. If you will notice, if you look at cars on our uh financials, that that sometimes is a little low.
Right.
But this is, yeah, the this is a best guess estimate that we can come up with. Uh, from the estimates we got with the assessors at the moment.
When you say a little low. This isn't low. What we receive is lower. This is.
No.
This is the maximum.
We usually get a little bit more. If you look at this year's rate, we're running about 868,000 right now.
Oh, you you're right. No, it's because it's the rate, the rate that we're liking, not the dollars. If there's more, if there's more property or if the values go up, you are you are correct. I I incorrect.
Did we confuse you?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, depending, Anthony, the way it works, if there's more, if the if the property values go up or if there's more property. The tax could be higher, but the rate that we charge cannot go higher. Than what was put in this levy.
And and nope, and that percent, and what was that rate?
Uh, Steve. Uh, I'm looking for it. It's.
Isn't it?
Uh, it's like about a sixth of a tenth of a percent, Anthony.
Uh, yeah, I I saw I saw a number like that.
000 something.
Okay, I was looking at the right number then. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Where did it just appear? It's in here somewhere.
Is it on page one or it's got the?
It's on.
Go back to page one. Okay. Is there any further comments or questions concerning the tax levy for 2020? If not. Roll call, please. Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Mr. Pranam.
Aye.
Mr. Himmel.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Motion so passes. Okay, Don, we want to talk about the. Property tax increase. Do we want to talk about a property tax increase?
Oh, you mean a referendum?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess we we'd have to put some numbers together over what we're. We're looking for, I mean, uh. Because I think, you know, last time we barely barely got it through. The time before that it didn't pass. And uh. I personally. Think the way we don't want to share the cost with our employees with benefits and uh some of the raises we're giving out. We just want to keep spending and we don't really care about the finances. That's my personal opinion. But yeah, we I think we'd have to work some numbers out. And try to. Get the residents to. I think it's gonna. Might take some advertising or something. Get them to change their mind because they they barely passed the last one we got through.
When does this all have to be put together?
Uh, the thing would have to be sent to the attorney so that would be drafted and be completed for a vote on the 19th of January.
So we don't have any proposed number yet or anything?
Uh, we did uh. At one point, we did 100% of what we were looking for. The next time we went back, uh, we dropped it to about. 50%.
I want to say 50.
Third. And then we ended up going to a third. Like a third of what we originally asked was about 180,000.
That's what they passed.
And that's what they passed. And that was in uh the spring of 2016. So right now, if we were looking at a third, we'd be looking at uh roughly $240,000.
I think. I don't know if we're going to get much more than that. That's probably.
So that would be roughly, you know, 30%. And you'd be looking about $240,000. Now, if we miss the January 19th cutoff to file a referendum with the county. The next time we would have a chance would be in the spring primary of 2022. Which would put collection of the taxes off until the spring of 2023. So if we got it on this year's referendum on this year's ballot in April, it would be payable in June of next year. So whatever we do, it's going to be 18 months.
June of 2022.
You're sure it would be June of 22, we're not 21.
Right, 22.
Yeah.
Right, June of 22. Uh, yeah, this is 20, next year is 21.
We can go for it.
The year after that is 22.
It's not going to help us next year.
Right. So.
It's so Steve?
Yes, Joe?
So Ed and I were talking that Ed made a very good point that if we do this, we need to be really clear what the money is going to be spent for. And I would say that we had a playground up in Saddle Club that we couldn't afford to replace that we would like may put some money in. The playground at Sabatino Park is at the end of its like, you know, useful life. And since it's a joint agreement, the park district, if we can't pay to replace it, they will just take it out. The entrance roads, we've pulled that out of the budget numerous years now. I believe we said the last time with the snowplow that this is probably the last snowplow we're going to be able to afford to buy with the five-year cap. I I, you know, I think we need to be really clear with the residents about what we're looking at because.
Well, that's true.
At some point, at some point, we don't get the money to do those things, then we will be out of business. And we'll be part of Westundy Elgin or.
Yeah. Something has to change, either cut services or. But whoever said we've got to make uh. Residents aware. Of what the money is for and what services we'll cut. Now, I have in my notes here from last meeting, and I think Steve brought it up. See, if I'm correct. A 33% figure would mean 185. Extra tax dollars. For a resident who owns a $300,000 house. Do I have that correct?
That's pretty close. That was my estimate.
Okay.
Well, it was a 25% increase.
25%, okay.
Yeah, 33% increase would be on a $300,000 home would uh equate to about $244 more.
And and I like to think if we start cutting those services, that the value of the house is going to go down a lot more than that.
Right.
And you and you got to be careful when you talk to the residents. We're only talking the portion of the Sleepy Hollow tax. So they look at it and they say, oh, man, nine grand, 33%? No, 33% is going to be on the 650 that they paid for the Sleepy Hollow portion only.
Right.
Right.
Correct. Right, and I I.
That's why we need to present a dollar. Percent and everything, people get mixed up with that. What's it going to cost them? With dollars? So.
And I know when I was environmental trustee, I write, people don't understand that because numerous times there was trees in the right of way that residents had that were dead that residents asked us to cut down. And. Most of the time we were having to hire a contractor. It was, you know, some of the big trees were $1,000 and they're like, well, that's only. You know, I'm paying $7,000 a year in taxes. It's it's a small part of my bill and I I really don't think most of the residents understand what they actually pay to the village for the services they get.
Right, I would agree. We have to make an education being a top top thing with this.
Going to be doing this though in the middle of a pandemic that doesn't seem to be going away. Or people are they're talking about, I don't think passed today, this uh stimulus package and they're talking about another one and it's going to be, it's going to be a tough sell in in this uh. This environment.
The one small advantage is that the tax is, uh, you know, a year later. Because we paid in the rears. I I understand. You know, extra money is hard, but. Perhaps in, I remember we were living in Sleepy Hollow during the time the tax reform failed. And then I didn't understand. I thought it was against the entire tax bill. So to to Don's point. Uh, and and maybe from a timing perspective and Joe's point and Ed on what. Services would be improved. We would have to do a, you know, fairly substantial marketing campaign, which will cost us dollars. Uh, so that everybody understands it, but by giving further uh tax increase that's further out. The hope would be. Residents would kind of plan for it to some degree.
Yeah. You know, we have these gentlemen here from the bluffs today. And they 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 just think because we're the village that we have the money. We're struggling so much. And uh, I I don't, it's going to have to be a big uh. A big sales job on the residence, I think.
I would agree it's going to have to be that.
Yeah.
I agree, but we got to do it.
Right.
We got to.
And the other part of that is is that. I'd feel bad, I shouldn't say feel bad, but I feel we need to give residents that choice of what they choose to spend on before we start cutting. You know, that that this is what you have to do. This is what we're not going to do. And if we don't have the money, these are the cuts you'll see, you know?
Right. It has to be clear.
It's their choice.
I think if we don't do it, we miss our window for quite a few years here yet to come. So. Uh, I agree, it's tough during a pandemic and it's tough anytime you want to raise taxes. But I think we have to look at this and say, we have to do an education job and a marketing job and tell people exactly what we're looking at because. If we don't, we miss our window for another, what, two years here uh before we can get anything, you know, coming back. So I think we have to move forward.
What kind of percentage do you guys think we should look for? 20, 30%?
I would say 30.
Yeah, I I would actually say 30 also because. Even though it it seems high, it's what we need.
I'd say 29. It doesn't sound as bad as 30.
And I would like to see some numbers. Those retail meetings.
Yeah. 2995.
199.
You know, we 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 made some special accommodations for our. Our businesses with liquor licenses. And so here 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 we're we're making accommodations then, which is fine, but. We're we're asking for the residents to dig in their pocket a little deeper. So it's, I think it's going to be a tough sell, so.
Okay, let's go with, uh, I've got a consensus of 30%. We can scratch that out. Put that into some numbers and you can look at that on the fourth. And if we think that's fine, we can instruct the attorney to draft the ordinance at that point and move forward.
Can we crunch numbers at 20? Can we crunch numbers at 22 just to see what they look like, Steve, just for?
I'll give you 20 to 30.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll even throw 29 in there.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm not kidding.
But that's going to, that's going to be out. That's going to be out in the double Z column of the Excel spreadsheet.
That shows much less than 30.
All right, uh. Anything else, Don?
All right, so uh. Let's see. Any any uh headway on the uh. MFT. Work that was being done that uh we didn't process? Didn't we miss some? work that was being done that, uh, we didn't process? Didn't we miss some reports?
The state did an audit and the state had lost their papers. We had done the paperwork correctly. They filed out. The state filed out.
Henry did?
No, the file, the state. We did our stuff correct.
Henry did it right?
Supposedly. I'm just telling you what the auditor told me, that the MFT audit was fine.
Okay. I'll find it.
We had everything that was needed. Uh, this goes back, probably what you're thinking though is this was
Twenty eighteen?
Probably twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Prior, prior to.
Helen was still here. That's why I thought
Okay, so.
Twenty eighteen something to file. That's what I'm worried about.
We'll see.
Okay, that's all.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Don. Uh, water and sewer, Joe?
Yeah, I have liked to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash, twenty twenty dash nineteen, an ordinance amending the water billing rate custard demand charge and the hydrant charges in the village water billing regulations.
Second, Dattley.
Voted by them, executed by Dattley to, uh, for ordinance twenty, twenty twenty dash nineteen amending the water billing rates. What are those rates, Joe?
Uh, it's in the ordinance, so.
Well, I know. I'm trying to find it. What are the rates?
Okay, uh, twenty-five dollars per month for a demand charge and eight dollars and sixty-seven cents per thousand gallons commodity cost plus a surcharge of six seventy per month.
Okay, these are the numbers you went through last meeting, correct?
In great detail, yes.
Yes, okay.
Is the ordinance on our package?
Yes.
Yeah. Page fifty-seven.
Nineteen?
Correct.
Page fifty-seven.
It's almost.
Part of that was, wasn't it a four percent raise from Elgin?
Uh, yeah, Elgin's raising four percent. I may add that we can probably, when I make a water report next month, I'll, I'll run out the figures over the next several years because Elgin has already voted to increase their water rates by four percent for the next five years, I believe, each year. So we can be expecting this every year to match up.
Okay, John, Don's still looking for.
No, go ahead.
All right, we don't have any other comments, questions or discussion on ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen, the ordinance amending the water billing rates.
One, one of the things we also should do then is maybe it's in the, uh, the legend or on the back of uh, maybe a, Joe, that, the rate would go up in, in January?
Correct.
Correct. So for the February, January, for the mount build in February for the January usage.
Right. So I, I know we don't have a lot of room on the back of the card, but and the legends already, or maybe we put something on the village website. Hey, everybody, you know, uh, water has to be some.
Word will be published.
Right, okay, good. That's fine.
That, that, and, right, blaming Elgin?
Yeah, exactly.
Highway of carpenters, though. And I think they came through this, through Eastundy and Westundy. Who did we miss? Okay, any else, Joe?
That's all. We need to vote on it, though.
Joe?
If we vote on it, Steve, 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 we got to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Try to derail it.
Uh, Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. Thank you, Joe.
That's all.
Uh, okay, Steve, police and public safety.
Uh, yeah, I have several things. I'll try to move through them as quickly as and efficiently as possible. Um, the first thing is just would like to welcome intern chief, uh, Christopher Chalpaca, uh, is joining and is, uh, filling in for, uh, Chief Rivas since his last day was the eighteenth. Uh, so just want to say welcome to him. We have met and, uh, we've talked about several different things and, uh, you know, he's a a man of a lot of knowledge and back, so I appreciate his input, uh, when it comes to things, uh, with police and public safety. Couple things, um, the update on the Mona Hour speed sign. Mr. Priggy did touch base back with me. Mona Hour is adamant that this sign go on the telephone pole next to the bridge. Um, I told Mr. Priggy I would have to look into this for the fact that we do not own that pole and I don't know if we can put a sign on that pole. So I have to try to find out who owns that pole and we can contact them and find out if we can get permission to put a speed sign on that pole. He said she is adamant about putting it in that spot. Um, I did offer the fact that Kyle could put it on a post right close to it. Um, he said she did, would not, uh, be willing to do that. So, um, if anybody knows who owns that pole or information on that, please pass it along to and I can reach out to them and then we can try to see if we can move that forward, uh, quick as possible. So that's an update on that. Um, couple things in your packet. You'll see that, uh, we had three officers recognized for, um, DUI enforcement, uh, training recognized by the allegiance against intoxicated motorists. Um, that was off for Chalpaca, uh, Gary Swartz and Jerry Norton. And just want to say, uh, thank you to them for their ongoing continuing, uh, education and training in that area. We appreciate it. The next thing is, um, for the, you'll see in your packet, we have two quotes for some, uh, equipment for CDW. There's a quote for one thousand four hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents. That's the computer things that go into the new squad, um, that we have. So, uh, I would like to make a motion that we approve that expense of one thousand four hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents to CDW for the, uh, purchase of the computer and the um, cover to go into the new squad car.
I'll second that.
Voted by Dattley, seconded by Zamba.
I just want to make sure, I was, you sure it's the all-in costs or something to be added to us?
There are two.
Just want to make sure now. Come on, guys.
I hear that's the all-in cost.
Okay, motion moved and seconded to approve the quote from CDW, the amount of one thousand four hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents. Any comments, questions or discussion?
Did we take delivery on the new squad already, Steve?
Yes, we did.
New squad is here.
Thank you.
Roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I do have one more for nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents to Ultra Strobe Communications. This is for brackets that have to be made to put into that squad. Uh, the squad came fully equipped with all the bars, light bars, cages, but, uh, they have to have the certain brackets to hook up all our equipment. So, and I'd like to make a motion for nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents to Ultra Strobe Communications, uh, for the payment and installation of the brackets into the new squad car.
Second, Nemec.
Voted by Dattley, seconded by Nemec to approve the nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents to Ultra Strobe. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. Motion so passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. And, uh, one, two last things. Uh, you'll see in your packet, you have ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen, which authorizes the sale of the twenty-eleven squad, uh, for four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to Dundee Ford. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept that ordinance and, uh, move forward with that.
Second. Voted by Dattley, seconded by Zamba to accept the offer of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from Dundee Ford for the two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victoria. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zamba.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. I knew Don would like that because we're making money on that.
I, I gotta go on record, though. You're getting to be like former Chief Lame and talk for a half hour during the meetings, so.
I'll try to make it short, though.
Go pay for that in the future. I guarantee it.
Steve?
Joe, Joe?
Yeah, for, just from the work we did on replacing the lines behind Willow and conversations that I believe ComEd owns the poles and then the other utilities such as AT&T or Comcast lease the pole from them. So I, I believe we, we have a contact.
Some poles are owned by AT&T, some are owned by Comcast.
Right, but if there, if there's power on them, they're, they're ComEd poles from what I've been told.
Well, we'll check into it.
Yeah.
See if they've got an ID mark on it. Go from there.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Uh, one last, one last quick thing is, uh, just a real quick update. On the, uh, police chief search commission, I'm in chair that, uh, that is advertised out on Blue Line. Um, at this point, we have six applicants already. Um, I had two people send me, you know, messages today that they would be applying. So we will have, uh, that's moving forward and the deadline for that is January fifteenth, uh, when we will have applications in. And then we will start going through them and classifying them into A, B and C categories. So just, that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, building and environment.
Sorry, word.
Thank you, Tom. Building and zoning, Anthony.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Old business. Got a purchase order for the road salt for this year in the amount of fifty-four thousand something. Let me see if I can find it again. There it is. Uh, fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents.
I might add, that's the minimum amount of salt quantity that we can buy without, uh, paying extra. So if you remember, we have some leftover. We have about four hundred pounds leftover. So that allows us to buy the minimum this year.
Good, because the price sure went up.
And I said pounds, we got four hundred tons.
Tons, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion to so approve the P O for the road salt.
So move, Hardy.
Second, Prano.
Voted by Hardy, seconded by Prano to authorize the purchase order of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents for five hundred and sixty ton of road salt. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
Do we know how much we use on an average snowfall, Ed, on, on, uh, when, when Kyle?
It all depends, Anthony, what kind of snow, how much we've got. You know, a two-incher, one pass may take care of us. If we've got continual snow, the guys may have to make three or four passes during a, an event. So it's really hard to get an average. Overall, we use somewhere around five to seven hundred ton a year.
Right. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, no other old business? Any other old business come before the board to make your other stuff?
We have to.
Got to vote.
We got to vote.
Jeez, I'm going to forget. You guys got to be here. I don't know. You're remote. I figured you voted. All right, roll call, please. Uh, uh, Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. No other old business to come before the board? Uh, new business? I told you we already talked about the tax levy. I was just seeing that again. Yeah, we've done that.
Maybe we started or something.
We did.
Okay.
Uh, but we do have a resolution, five twenty-nine, establishing the dates of regular meetings of board trustees of the village of Sleepy Hollow for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-one. Has everybody had a chance to look at the calendar?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's good. Uh, first off, uh, you got any problems with any of the dates picked out? The one I will notice is July fifth, two thousand twenty-one. July fifth is the day after the fourth, which is on a Sunday. So Monday, July fifth technically will be the federal holiday. Do we want to meet on the federal holiday or do we want to meet on the sixth?
Sixth, I would, I'd rather move it to the sixth.
Sixth.
Yep.
Sixth. Don, got that? Got it? Okay, any of the other dates? We got the nineteenth of Feb, of January and we've got the sixteenth of February. Both are Tuesdays.
That's fine.
Okay. We have a motion to approve resolution five twenty-nine with the change to the July, uh, meeting from the fifth.
So move, Nemec.
Second. Voted by Nemec, seconded by Merkel to accept the calendar for the dates of two thousand twenty-one for board trustee meetings. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none. Roll call, please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Datt.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. We've got a calendar for two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we've already taken care of ordinance twenty twenty? Twenty? Twenty twenty, 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 twenty. Any other new business to come before the board? I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Roll call, please. Mr. Zamba.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody. I'll see you back here next year.
Happy holidays, everyone.
So I missed a meeting and you pissed the chief off and you lose.
Anthony Mills, good luck.
All, all your fault, Don.
That's okay. You got a sense of you. Good night, all.
Good night.
Night.